This special meeting of the City Council of the Town of Atherton, order September 4th at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call this because this is a special meeting that had been postponed from our August 21st meeting and so it's not a special session, it is a special meeting. We're going to have a full council meeting tonight. 7 o'clock is not our end time, but here we go. So we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council, can we have the roll call please?
Member Nobby?
Yes.
Mayor Whitmer?
Vice Mayor Wees?
Mayor Lewis?
Here. Call President out for her, there's only four of us as you can see, but that is a full council that we have at this moment. So moving on, we have a presentation tonight. It's being given by the Board Trustee President of the San Mateo County Mosquito Vector and Control District, Sam Merner, and the District Manager, Bob Gay. So Sam and Bob, get on.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Lewis, Town Council Members and Residents. I'm Dr. Sam Merner, a 26-year resident of the Town of Atherton, currently serving in my sixth year as trustee from the Town of Atherton on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. And that took five years to learn how to say that. Presently, I am completing a two-year term as Board President. The district's mission is to safeguard the health and comfort of our citizens through a planned program to reduce mosquitoes and other vectors that transmit disease. I'm here tonight primarily to assure our residents that the district is doing an outstanding job. We are fortunate to have very dedicated and talented staff led by our district manager, Robert Gay. He's a retired United States Naval Officer, having served his entire career as a medical entomologist. Mr. Gay will now provide you with more detailed information on how the district functions as a public health agency.
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Wees, City Council, city staff and residents of Atherton. Your mosquito and vector control district wants to thank you for the opportunity to address your town and provide an update of our district's services and programs. West Nile virus is alive and well in the state of California and the Bay Area. As of August 30th, a total of 87 human cases of West Nile virus were reported from 23 counties with five fatalities. In the Bay Area, Santa Clara and Contra Costa Counties have recorded the highest West Nile virus activity with three human cases, 97 positive dead birds, 34 positive mosquito pools, and four sentinel chickens. In San Mateo County, we have recorded a number of chronic West Nile virus positive birds and squirrels, most recently a squirrel in Burlingame and a housefinch in El Granada. The chronic West Nile virus infections have a very low level of virus and have an unknown infection date. We have no human cases in San Mateo, no positive mosquito pools, and no positive sentinel chickens to date, which we're very proud of. Our staff continues to provide your residents complete mosquito control throughout your communities. We provide surveillance for vector-borne diseases, including West Nile virus, Lyme disease, hantavirus, and plague, the name of you. We do door-to-door mosquito inspections. We do respond to any service requests from your community within 24 hours. One of our staff members are at their door. We do control of ground nesting yellow jackets, and in Atherton, we treat quite a few. We provide mosquito-eating fish for backyard ponds. Quite a few ponds are in Atherton. We do presentations for the schools and civic groups. We do identification for insects and ticks. And we have a public outreach program, and the county in 2008 transferred to us their vector program, which include the rodent control program. Our staffing has significantly changed over the last two years. We hired a new finance director and accountant from the corporate world. We hired a new assistant manager and laboratory director after a national search. And we hired two new vector control technicians on a statewide search. These new staff members have allowed us to maintain a successful and improving operational and entomology program. The Board of Trustees approved the purchasing of PCR equipment, laboratory equipment, to do DNA testing. This allows us to go out and monitor, collect mosquitoes, and test them if they're positive and treat them the same day. It's a huge benefit for the district. Our newest problem that we have, we need to pass on to you, is a special mosquito called 80's Aegypti, nationally known, international threat, one of the largest vectors of dengue fever and chicken gonja virus and yellow fever, was found in Fresno and Madera County just two months ago. We instituted a special mosquito surveillance trapping program using small black plastic cups that hold water, inside and you put a tongue depressor, and the mosquitoes that like to breed in those type of containers will come and lay their eggs above the waterline. We set 48 of those traps out around the county, 12 cemeteries, four nurseries, four traps in each site. On August 22nd, one of those traps at the Holy Cross Cemetery in Menlo Park turned positive for 80's Aegypti. Because of that, we put out a public health press release with the county public health officer, Scott Morrow, and we've instituted a massive door-to-door surveillance and control program. And when we get more information over the next two to three days, we will come down and inform your city manager on what the findings are because it's fairly close to your Town of Atherton. And that's what we have. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
We appreciate you coming and updating us. You do provide an excellent service. I know that I've talked with neighbors of mine and they've used you, and we really do appreciate it because there are large properties and people don't always go and, you know, check every nook and corner. So I think that you're doing an excellent job. Thank you for all the reorganization and upgrade of the internal systems that you've done over the last two years.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So moving on, now's the time of the public comments, but typically, we were going to have our resident William Ridley, as you know, come last and on August 21st to update us on the high-speed rail as he has been doing regularly, but that meeting was canceled and so he's unavailable for tonight. However, I think we have someone who has spent as much time or probably more time in the fight against high-speed rail on our behalf, going to give us an update. Is that correct, Mr. Brady? So please come to the podium and we will not limit you to three minutes for public comment. We are eager to hear what you have to say. And would you just introduce yourself and tell the public who you are and what your role has been for us?
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I'm Mike Brady, and I've been involved in the fight against high-speed rail for 10 years here on the peninsula. I live just a few blocks away in the Stone Pond Park Forest Development off of Bell Camino across from Menlo College. And my clients in this lawsuit are Kings County and two residents of Kings County. But I've been coming to your rail committee meetings for years and have been involved. That's probably the best rail committee in the state. I mean, I've never seen so much expert talent, people who know rails and engineering and math and finance and so forth. It's wonderful to work with them over the years. And it's a special honor for me to be here tonight because Atherton has been our longest and strongest municipal supporter, including financial. You've been our greatest financial supporter in this long battle. And we are an army of volunteers. Almost all of us work at no, including myself, work at no fee, no charge. We have some amazing talent, financial engineering, including many people from your rail committee who've been active in this fight. And finally, our efforts came to success about two weeks ago, on August the 16th. The judge hearing the case, Judge Michael Kenny in Sacramento where we have to sue, ruled that the authority had violated two fundamental provisions of Proposition 1A, which I'll tell you about in just one minute. We now have another hearing, November the 8th. This could be the pivotal hearing. This could be the hearing where the judge decides what he is going to order the authority to do. Will he order the authority to stop all their operations in the state? We hope so. We think that that's the path that the judge is on, to stop the project, stop the spending of Proposition 1A money. And if Proposition 1A money is not available for this project, we think the project will probably die a natural death, which many people on the peninsula especially, and in the valley where the project will commence, desire. But what the judge ruled on August the 16th was this. He said that before the authority can start the project, start construction, they have to have in place the financing for the entire, we call it a usable segment that they selected. They call it an I O S, Initial Operating Segment. But they pick a segment that they say they will complete all the construction by turning it into a true high-speed rail segment. And the segment runs from Merced to the San Fernando Valley around Silmar. That's a distance of 300 miles. This was selected by the authority and announced, "This is our baby. This is what we're going to build." But they then took the position that they weren't going to build it all at once, they were going to only build 130 miles, what they call their initial construction section. And they said, "We've got enough money for this. We don't have enough money for the whole thing, and the law permits us to start. And someday we'll come back and we'll finish the whole thing as an electrified high-speed rail usable segment." The judge said, "No. The law doesn't permit you to do that. You can't just build part of it and then say you're going to come back." You've got to have all the money committed to build the whole thing before you start any part of it. And you can readily appreciate the importance of that, the fundamental importance of that, when you realize that the whole segment costs $31 billion. And all they have in Proposition 1A is about $8.5 billion, plus they got $3 billion from the federal government. So they, they don't have, they're going to be, because of the increase in cost, about $23, $24 billion short. There's no way the state of California can fund that. They can't possibly fund that amount of money. The federal government has announced they're cutting off California. No more money for high-speed rail, not one dime. They're fed up with it. Local governments have not come to the rescue, and for five years, no private investor has ever expressed any interest in the project because it's a money loser. It's a failure. It's a total loser. Nobody will ever make any money off of it. So you can readily see that if they have to come up with $24 billion, this project will probably never get started anywhere in the state. Never. This has been the object of this town for a long time and for many people here on the peninsula. The second holding of the judge was that the authority had violated the very important environmental requirements. Here, the legislature, when they crafted Proposition 1A, what they did was they crafted a statute and they put it before you, the voters, in November of 2008 as an initiative, and it was narrowly passed by the voters. But they, the legislature said that two years before the vote, all the environmental clearances had to have been completed by the authority. That means they had to go out and get the SEQA and the federal clearances and the local and the regional clearances and the Army Corps of Engineer, all the environmental clearances had to be completed. And this had to be done a long time ago, back in November 2011. And the authority arrogantly said, "Well, what we'll do is, we promise that we'll get all the environmental clearances before we start construction on the 130-mile park." The court said, "Oh, no. You can't get away with this. You've got to have all the environmental clearances for the entire 300 miles, all of them, over the Tehachapi's, down into LA Basin, Bakersfield, Palmdale, the whole lot, through all these protected species of plants and animals, the usual arguments that the environmentalists talk about. Very complicated. Have to have the whole thing done and completed before you can start construction." Well, as a practical matter, this is going to take years, years to do all this. To give you an illustration, five years ago, the proposition passed. Today, as we sit here, only 28 miles have completed environmental clearances. 28 miles out of 300. Now you just guess, if it's taken them five years to get 28 miles, how long is it going to take them to get 300? We think that the judge's order and the remedies that we think that he will award to us in two months will make it virtually impossible for them to comply with the law. All we're trying to do is make the authority and the state comply with their own law, nothing else. We should all strive for that. We should always strive to comply and comply with their own laws. That's all we're trying to do, and we're very gratified that the judge ruled that we were correct in setting out the violations that occurred, and these are very, very important violations. Those requirements were put in there to coax the voters to support this. The voters would think to themselves, "You know what? They have to come up with all the money for the whole thing before they start." Not like the Bay Bridge. Remember, it was supposed to cost $1.5 billion. By the time interest runs, it's going to cost $12 billion for that segment. This is one of the most unusual public works statutes, Proposition 1A, you've ever seen. All sorts of safeguards to build in to coax the voters, to make sure there wouldn't be an abandoned project, an uncompleted project, make sure they got all their ducks in order on the environmental thing, so that once they start construction in Madera, they'd find some desert rat someplace in Bakersfield that would delay the project for another two years. This happens all the time. We've seen it in water projects in the valley where the fish have stopped the water from going to the farmers in the lower part of the valley for years. The legislature knew all about this and said, "No, no. You get everything done beforehand." So we think it's a very wise ruling from the judge and that it will go a long way to probably preventing this project from ever coming to town, which we think has always been our objective. The law requires some very strict safeguards. They didn't comply with them, and they arrogantly announced that they would not comply, and the judge said, "You just can't do that." So the next big step, November the 8th, the remedies hearing before Judge Kenny, in which we will ask for him essentially to stop them from spending any Proposition 1A money for any construction or any commencement or for anything else, land acquisition, construction, or environmental studies and the like. And if he goes along with us, then that should put a stop to something that we fought against for years. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
I just want to say that that sounds like really, really, really good news to us here, that I don't think champagnes or corks are popping just yet. That is quite fun. Yes.
I noticed Jerry Brown's comments on that ruling. He kind of just proved it. He said, "That's not going to hold us up one more year." Have you had any?
Well, you would think that since the judge still has jurisdiction for the case and is going to decide what he's going to do, and the governor of the state announces that "We don't care, we're just going to go ahead and build the project," and then the CEO of the High-Speed Rail Authority, Mr. Morales, announces, "Ruling doesn't affect us at all, and I told you how the ruling affects the authority." That wouldn't sit very well, the judge. So it's what we call hubris or errand. What I did bring with me, most of the press, and this has been written on throughout the United States, the judge's ruling, because it is such an important step. Most of the press has been favorable. I'm going to leave with the council and then I'll put in the back of the room probably enough copies for everybody, a very good article from the San Diego Tribune, which really captures the significance of this ruling and what's coming up. Because there've been some articles in the press that say that, well, you know, he didn't really shut it down and so forth. This article, I think, is a much more accurate portrayal of the legal situation.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
How does that affect the Caltrain's electrification project that Miriam Lee and Eileen have settled?
Yes. I'm not prepared to fully comment on that because that is not really directly involved in this lawsuit. Since the project is starting in the Central Valley, that's where the project, where we had to focus. I do think this, if the project is ultimately held to have to comply with these strict guidelines and safeguards, then I think it means that the high-speed rail project cannot start anywhere in California until it goes through those rigorous requirements. I've already said that I think it's virtually impossible for them to comply with what the law requires, and I believe that will cause the Caltrain high-speed rail project to collapse as well. See, in order for Caltrain to get $600 million from Proposition 1A, which is what they're hoping to get, they have to pretend that they are high-speed rail. Proposition 1A is only allowed to go to the High-Speed Rail Authority. So Caltrain pretends that they are high-speed rail, and they have to do that. And so if the court, in essence, says there can be no high-speed rail project in California because there's been no compliance, then I think the plans for the peninsula collapse. And some people may think that's a good deal because it's going to wreck the heart of towns like Atherton, Menlo Park, Mountain View, Palo Alto, and 2,000 trees between your northern border and the southern border of Palo Alto. Mature trees will be torn down, and I've told people this place will look like the approach from Newark to Philadelphia. Not exactly a beautiful trip on the train without your trees, the landscaping, and the increased ride will be necessary.
What's newer on the?
Pardon me?
Newer on the turnpike either, by the way.
The New Jersey.
The turn, oh, the New Jersey.
The turnpike, yeah.
It's not fun on the train going on the turnpike.
But that could be the subject of a later suit, the peninsula, but I do think that this, if Caltrain is ignoring this, the ramifications of this suit, I think that's rather cool.
Any other council comments?
No, thank you.
So I'm going to leave enough copies for the council. I'll put the rest of these press articles in the back.
Mr. Brady, I think we have a question for you.
I just have one question, sir. I do appreciate what you're doing because of the spike. See it pretty much like you do, is money is being squandered into high-speed rail. But my question is, is there some way that Governor Brown can supersede the judge in allowing this to happen? Which I hope doesn't happen, but is there some way he can supersede?
The answer is no. There is no way. What you may not realize is that an initiative which is passed by the people, which this won, is supreme over everything. Under this California Constitution, an initiative is always supreme. It's supreme over a legislature's own statute. The legislature cannot change an initiative passed by the people.
Thank you very much.
Only the people can change it with another initiative. In fact, I've suggested a political solution to this whole thing, which is that the legislature tomorrow should pass a statute creating an initiative to be placed before the people, transferring the $9 billion in Prop. 1A to a fund for K through 12, and let the people vote on the initiative. Well, everybody loves education, so everybody would vote for it. And then the governor would save face and the legislature would save face, and you would put the money probably to much better use, a higher priority education rather than the high-speed rail.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a nice political idea if anybody wants to run with it. I'm too busy.
We don't need to give you the press to. Well, thank you again.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
And again, thank you. It's been an honor to work with you and will continue to work with you over the years.
Great. Thank you very much. So now, this time, I will open the floor for public comment. This portion of the meeting is for items that the public might speak on that are not on the agenda. But if you have a time constraint and you want to speak on an item that is going to be taken up later in the evening, just remember that that will be your three minutes of time for that item. So does anyone of the public have a public comment? Would you like to come up to the podium? Yes, yes. Well, it's nice to know who you are. It's not a law or a requirement that you give your name or address, but for the record, it's nice to know who's speaking.
John Ruggiero, Stockbridge Avenue.
Thank you.
Recently, I thought of running for office, but I got out of it, as you know. And my major point that I wanted to run for office was how Atherton information distribution is a dinosaur. It's embarrassing to watch East Palo Alto, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and all the other cities around here on Channel 26 and 29 in their council meetings and their committee meetings. We have 7,000 residents in Atherton. We have 5,000 voters, over 5,000, and all these people are fine people, probably a lot of them don't even live in Atherton. You're getting 1% or 2% or 3% of the people here. We've been fighting for this for years, and they say, "Oh, it's costly, it's this and that." They put in $3 million worth of streeting in Stockbridge, which we didn't eat recently, and it's unbelievable. I watched the other evening, an item that Atherton probably is going to inherit part of it, the Palo Alto City Council discussing sleeping, living in automobiles. It took quite a while. They finally are removing the people who live in automobiles. Don't think a few of them are going to wind up over here. But the point is, we have all these residents that are going to put you in office, they don't see what you're speaking. The little paper comes out, the Atherton, if my neighbor is a good example, Charles Murray Moreno, 50-year resident of Atherton, owns businesses. He can't come to these meetings. Comes once every six months. He's difficult. He comes home from work. He's tired. And they have the younger people the same way coming in. But we need to have exposure of the way these people are running this town. Candidates, I don't even think any of the candidates are here this evening. I'm not sure. I don't see, I know one is an excuse, he's out of town, but I don't even see any of the three candidates here. How are they going to see what's going on this evening? This is something that's been put over and put over. It doesn't cost that much. I know a couple of members of the council already were for this. If we're going to wait for the new city hall, that could be when Obama's out of office and to put it there. Put it in here, it's not that costly. We owe it to the 7,000 residents of Atherton. We owe it to the 7,000 residents of Atherton.
Any other members of the public want to speak? Anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir.
Hi, Bob Roser. This is not a rebuttal to what you just asked for there, but I think the communications have improved dramatically over the last six months. I think the summary of the meetings, the issues, the stuff that George puts out and Theresa puts out is a great improvement over six or nine months ago. And so you can keep up much better on issues, you're much more informed, and I think it's gotten a lot better. And if you're on that list to get those emails, you can be up to date on a lot of things that are going on. I'm not saying we shouldn't have it on TV, but things have really improved and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, I'll close the public comment period. Item number five on our agenda is a closed session, and there is no closed session, so there's nothing to report. Item number six is our city manager's report, and I'll turn it over to our city manager, George Rogers, to you on thoughts about it.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Members of the council, there's one request for feedback from the council on here, but I'll go through the information items first. Firstly, if you turn around and look behind you, upon the wall up above is our city seal. We finally got that up off the floor, back up on the wall where it belongs. It's taken a while, but it's accomplished. Next up is the Community Center Advisory Committee has a public workshop scheduled for September 17th at 6:00 PM, inviting the entire community to attend, provide feedback on what you'd like the civic center to look like. The Athertonian newsletter is, we're putting together articles for it. It should be coming out in the next month or so. That's the print edition. You can, as Mr. Roser mentioned, you can visit the city website and you'll also get the Atherton Online, which comes out weekly with a lot of information. You'll get news flashes from Town Hall, from various different departments on projects and activities going on around town. I wanted to point out, there's some legislative actions. We'll have some letters for the mayor to sign with the council recurrence. A couple of those are directly related to bargaining issues. One is fact-finding panel, parent negotiations, and the other is, sorry, excuse me for a moment.
M and B?
Yes, exactly. Also noting, we have break setting for SPWMA, recology. That will be coming back to the council sometime in October. We'll have, we have two new patrol vehicles that are in the police yard out back. They haven't been outfitted yet, they're stripped-down horses, but they are out there. The next finance committee meeting is set for September 11th at 2:00 PM. They're going to be looking at a sensitivity analysis to give a handle on the impacts of the Calpers smoothing beginning in 2015, as well as calculating the net effect of a lower discount rate than Calpers' projections. Staff's preparing an RFP, but the committee will have options and they're ultimately going to recommend one of those options to the city council. You know, the members themselves can set up subcommittees to work on the numbers and return that to the full committee. Joe Nation might be willing to do it pro bono. Staff could provide some broad estimates and the committee could then use those as a baseline for developing some policy recommendations to the council. But they'll review that and make a recommendation. The last item I wanted to bring to the council's attention and we'll need some feedback on is the first one there is regarding the Watkins House. At the last council meeting, there was some discussion amongst the council as to what's going to happen with the house now that it's not being lived in. There was a difference of opinion amongst the council members, so staff didn't really have any direction. Presently, it's sitting in the park master plan proposal as a potential venue and the consultant will look at it from that perspective. But I'm tossing it back out to the council this evening to make sure that that's where you'd really want to see it go and to get some additional feedback.
I'll have you, Jim.
Get some of the city manager's reports.
It's not on the agenda, it's an action item.
No, it's not an action, it's just giving you some feedback.
Do you want feedback right now?
So.
Comments of the city manager's report.
So the city manager's report, does any member of the public have a comment on that? Bring it back to council. Councilmember Bobby?
Yeah, I want to talk about the city manager's house because, you know, the park master plan will be years in the making. And meanwhile, we're losing $8,000 to $9,000 a month by not renting that place. It just seems to me just a slam dunk that until such times we have a master plan, we ought to be bringing in whatever revenue you can get from renting the place. We don't need the house. The main house there has plenty of rooms for us to meet in if we need some extra million rooms. It just seems to me, I can't understand why the council would not immediately, okay, renting that place unless there's some legal requirement that they're just doing it. I mean, we do a lot for $7,000, $8,000 a month in other areas. It just seems to me that we can pick up $7,000, $8,000 a month or maybe more, then we ought to do it, we ought to do it right away.
Thank you.
So I don't necessarily disagree with the drive to bring in some revenue. I'm not sure it would be $8,000 a month, but I probably would think it's not going to be that at all, but at least I think there is some revenue that we could get. And if nothing else, there was a presentation here about, you know, having parts of the house, you know, certain rooms rented out for a certain fee for some people who live in the area that actually need that type of home share that we had a presentation here a number of months ago. That is also an option. So I think that we should look into something like that and have staff, you know, come back with looking at some options, perhaps as an agenda item, and just so we know what all the options are.
Okay. Councilmember East, vice chancellor East, sorry.
I know that I've probably been pretty open about it, related to having it as an option as far as a rental is concerned. I also know that we have some issues with school. I do have some real concerns on going out and saying rent, using it, using it as a rental because there are going to be some extreme limitations to the people that rent it because the park does close. And how can we make additional requirements on somebody from the outside? It's a little different, it's a little different when it's a county manager, but if it's somebody from the outside, how can we limit the visitors or anything like that when the park closes? So I'm still on the rent it as an option with your events.
So. Oh, sure.
Yeah, with my, with my comment on the, you know, lower-cost renting, you know, I think one of the things that, like the ruling they've done at San Francisco and many of the communities where they have some, some degree of subsidized rent or lower-cost rent, you know, we do have-